Pressure. Okay, yes, Gabby will not be with us. Well, all right. I will mark her absence and we'll mark Jeff in when he comes. Okay. Oh, got it. Okay. All right, well, I guess we can, we can go ahead and get started with the three of us. So, you know, we've sent out that communication to the town newsletter. Was that published in the school newsletter? As well?
I don't believe that it was actually.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe we could just sneak it in one at some point here.
Totally.
And then, so the things that we were, we talked about last time, we wanted to talk about further communication regarding the new school. However, I do think because we are heading into budget season, we might want to really hunker down and focus on getting the word out about the budget and the meetings and, you know, we can only do so many things. So I, I do think that that should take priority. So, I mean, in the past, there's been stuff in the school newsletter published, there's been stuff in the town, well, last year there was, there are things in the town newsletter. That's really kind of the first year, I think, right? All right, so I guess, well, I'll coordinate with them. Uh, what is
Yeah, I mean, I can give you the dates for the workshops that are coming up.
Fantastic.
Two days. And one is going to be in the afternoon to evening timeframe, and then another day is going to be in the morning and the hopes of that. It's just so that people don't have to miss too much time off of work. Some people might be able to only make it in the morning, or some people might only be able to make it in the evening, so.
Yes, okay.
Do you want that now? Or do you want me to just email you?
Uh, if you just want to email it to me and we can, we can.
Well, I guess I should also probably announce it publicly too, so. March, March fourteenth is the first budget workshop. It's going to be held at the Wentworth Learning Commons from four thirty to seven. And then March fifteenth is the budget workshop in council chambers from eight thirty to eleven.
And which one, we have two that we have to be in on, right? Are those the two?
Yep, because the purpose of those workshops, it's a presentation to the board from all of our department leaders and all of our building principals in regards to next year's budget.
Perfect. And the, and the public can join that, correct?
Yep, they're public meetings.
Okay, great, wonderful.
And, and our last finance meeting, we were talking about hybrid, but I think we were still trying to figure out how it was going to work out for Wentworth and the Learning Commons to make that into a.
Yeah, I think the way that we would have to, you know, we would have to do it would be using the owl. Which, you know, again, it, it's functional, it works. I, I think the challenging piece is the bigger the group or the larger the sized room, the smaller the faces on the owl, right, for the viewers that are at home. But, you know, I think that is probably as good as we can get. Because as, as you all have come to learn, you know, i- if we have people all on Zoom in a room together, there's a lot of feedback from computers that people are forgetting to, you know, mute your computers, et cetera. So the owl is a, is a good solution for that.
All right. What's, what did you say? The March fifteenth?
March fifteenth, Council Chambers, eight thirty, eleven.
I'm really glad that it's my all right, right, Council Chambers. All right, great, thank you. So, maybe we can just see if we can get that published in the town newsletter and the school newsletter. Boy, it's already coming up. So, next week, yeah. And then, you know, we'll keep moving on from there. We can, there'll be other workshops, I think, well, not maybe workshops, other well, and of course, all the budget meetings are public too.
Yeah, in the past, I believe that the communications committee kind of put out a timeline of all of those dates into one document, and, and I think that has served to be helpful. So I'm wondering, you know, if we took a look at what's been published in the past, that might be a template for you to update.
Okay, perfect.
And that way people have that, you know, kind of beginning to end view, right? Because we know, you know, the date of the vote, and then, you know, we can work backwards from there and look at, you know, the, the different pieces, because some of the pieces are, you know, first reading on the school board side and second reading on the school board side, and then there's first reading on the town council side for them to accept it, and second reading from the town council side. So, you know, once, once we start hitting these two budget workshops, then there are a lot of, you know, lots of moving pieces.
Okay.
Can we get that up on Facebook too? Because, you know, I don't know if people are reading all the newsletters with this information out there.
Yeah, so if you do, uh, you know, if you do up, uh, you know, some type of communication, we can absolutely get that on there. We can just, you know, that's an easy ask for Kelly Johnson to do.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that would be a great idea too. All right, well, I think that's just going to move forward with getting that information out to the public. And, you know, I think it wouldn't be too difficult to also get announced when the, the new school meetings are. They're one, right now, they're about once a month with just a little blurb about what will be discussed. I'll try, I'll just try to get that out when that happens. When the next date is, it's probably already set. Okay.
Yeah, actually, the next Building Steering Committee meeting is on Tuesday, March fifteenth. In the evening.
Oh, God, that's gonna be a long day.
It's a busy week because we have two budget workshops, there's the building committee meeting, and then it's a school board week as well, so. This is the time of year where everything just ramps up. Lots of moving parts in the spring in schools.
What did you say that was again? The fifteenth?
March fifteenth.
Okay. I'll get that on there. You know, I think it would be great to do additional gratitude message. When is Teachers' Week? Or is it Teachers' Week or Teachers?
Like the first week of April?
May.
May.
First week in May, okay. Teachers. There was a, there was a document. That would be actually good to create and update that and have a timeline for all this stuff. Bus driver appreciation is coming right up too, right?
I don't know the date on that. I know that our schools try to do things, like I know the primary schools, I think, just recently did some things for bus, you know, to appreciate bus drivers, so I don't know that it's connected to a certain date or not.
Okay. Okay, well.
I think, um, I think Nurses' Week is also the same week as Teachers' Week.
Yep. Yeah, and generally in the schools, like, they just call it Staff Appreciation Week, so that everyone is acknowledged, not just, you know, like subsets of groups, because that would feel awkward, right? So, you know, I think most of, all of the schools just have, you know, very inclusive acknowledgements for everyone.
Great, perfect. All right, well, I think we can maybe get some things out. That shouldn't be too bad. We can even use the column in the newspaper to maybe highlight some things. Have to think about what. All right, so we have on here also to revisit launching the Spotlight Awards, which I think is really important. I think it might be a little much for the next month. I don't know how you feel about it. It sounds like it's very involved. But I do think it's really important, and I would really like to see if we could maybe streamline that process a little, so that it is feasible on, you know, monthly or maybe every other month basis. Has, was it monthly in the past?
It was monthly in the past, and I believe what they, what the board had done was they had a Google form that they widely shared so that folks could nominate people for Spotlight Awards. So then, you know, those nominations would come to the committee and, and then they would, you know, make some decisions and select folks or groups, right? Sometimes it was individuals, sometimes it, you know, it, it was a group or, you know, different ways of looking at who that was. And then, you know, at the time, I think April was the head of this committee that kicked this off, and they would go to the schools and talk to the people who had nominated their peers and, you know, compile, you know, some video and some pictures so that there was a nice piece of acknowledgement.
Okay. All right, well, I mean.
That's something that we can also have Gabby help us with, since she's already in the schools, well, she's gathering, you know, pictures and stuff for us for, um, for our presentations too, to kind of just add that to.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly ask. Well, both of them, really.
Yeah. Although it'd be really nice for us to be able to go into the school, just it might not always be physically possible for us.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, we can also rotate. I mean, there's four of us. I mean, if we, if we each took one.
Yeah.
You know? We'll really only do two in a year. Two to three. So, yeah, that's not too bad. All right, well, maybe we can start gearing up for that after we get beyond all this.
March.
Yeah, yeah, a lot. The budget stuff is is really a lot. Not that I know, because I haven't been through it before, but it looks like a lot.
I can also share with you if it's helpful, the nomination form that's been used in the past.
That would be great.
Yeah, I'm actually just pulling that up on my other computer here, so then at least you have as a starting point for yourselves. You know, what, what it's looked like, and whether you're comfortable with that, or you want to make changes. Whichever. I will share that with you. Let's see if I can. What I'll do is I'll make a copy of it. The one that I have has responses in it, right, because it was an active document. So I'll just make a, a copy of the form so that you can see that. And at some point, it probably would be helpful for you to have also have the information about who has received Spotlight Awards.
Yes.
Past, right? So then that way, we're not, you know, recycling the same individuals. You know, not to say that they might not continue to be deserving, but, you know, in a, in an organization our size with six hundred staff, you know, there's the opportunity to really, you know, go, go broad and, and diversify the folks that are being highlighted.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, it might be good to start a spreadsheet or something. You know, who's been, maybe who's been nominated and who was selected, like, just so that, you know, maybe somebody's been nominated four or five times, you see that, but they've never been selected. Might help drive some decisions. Do you think it would be okay to say, you know, on the form, you know, would you be willing to collect, you know, some pictures of the person you're nominating if they're selected?
I think, I, I mean, I think that's a decision for, for, for you to decide in terms of how you want to approach it. I, I think the, the reason or how it kind of came about was so that the board was acknowledging that person, right? And so, you know, you get input from others, but then it really, you know, came from the board in terms of, you know, that acknowledgement. So it, it might feel a little differently if the person who's nominating is also providing all of the stuff to you, and then we're just hitting play. I wonder, you know, if, if people might have a different sense of that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I mean, I just, you know, like, there's some opportunities that we might not be able to
Right.
get. I mean, I think we should go in and get the videos and, you know, there's like some actions, like, I'm just thinking, well, I mean, if it was a coach or something, I'm sure it would be pretty simple to get pictures of that person in action. Going, I just envisioning, like, do you go in and take a picture of somebody teaching a class, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Clearly stage that.
What'd you say?
Said you can certainly stage that kind of motion, you know, that they're teaching.
Yeah. All right, all right. Well, I'll just, I'll have to reach out to people who.
Yeah, and I, it looks as though you both have access to the Spotlight Award folder. That's in Communications Committee Drive. So if you take a look at that and you open that up, you know, I just made a, a new copy of the form itself, but if you open it up, it also shows you all kinds, like, everyone who's ever gotten one. You have access to the videos that were shared at the previous board meetings and all of that detail. So that can really help you, you know, to get an idea of what it's looked like, and then the spin that you might want to put on it.
Okay. I'll take a look, find it now. But Leanne probably has a really good idea of, I think she's in the past said that she had some good ideas, so hopefully I can track her down. Great. I always love watching these.
Yeah, they are really great. And, you know, again, to, you know, to see the staff members come to the meeting and, you know, bring family members with them and it's, it's really a great celebration.
Yeah.
For sure.
It can be real tear-jerkers. Yeah, I mean, and do those get published also to the Facebook page? Or, I mean, would that be okay to do?
I don't know if we've shared the videos on Facebook in the past. That may be, you know, Kelly Johnson might be able to provide that information for us. Certainly, they become part of the, you know, every, all the school board meetings are recorded, so it becomes part of that.
Yeah.
But Kelly could tell us if, if they were posted on social media or, you know, shared in other ways.
Be nice, even, you know, then they have, like, something to look at and screenshot it and take that home with them too.
Yeah, yeah, I know, you know, I don't know. Feels like a nice way for the community to interact with what's going on in the schools. All right, well, let's see, what else do we have?
I did put in that, I did get the information about the school lunch program that you asked me about.
Yeah, I saw that.
And so I, I kind of, I just pasted that right into the agenda so that I would have it, because it's kind of hard to manipulate, like, all of, all of this virtually. But yeah, so, you know, as I shared with you at the last meeting, we are operating in the black at the current time. And I think you'll see in our upcoming budget workshops, when our Food Services Director presents his information to you, we are serving more breakfasts and lunches than we ever have in the past. And because of, you know, the nutrition program being free for all of our students, we have it, it, it's benefited our program, right? Because we have more kids eating than ever, and we get reimbursement for every single meal that we serve. So, you know, so that has allowed us to operate in the black. And, you know, as I noted in the agenda here, right now, we have a positive fund balance of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And as you see in the upcoming budget workshops, we'll be looking to present a school nutrition budget for you that is fully funded without any tax contribution, and that really is quite significant. Because in the past, you know, the, the district has had to, you know, kick in several hundred thousand dollars at times to, you, you know, to, to even out those accounts. So, so that's a, a huge benefit, and we foresee that that will continue to be the case at least through next school year, because the, the government is continuing to fund all meals for students through the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as well.
That's amazing, really, truly. What a great thing to advertise.
Right.
All right, I know my kids are loving having school. Breakfast, whether I order it or not.
Yep. Yeah, and in the past, right? Like, I know, having, you know, been a longstanding school principal for many years, and in the past, you know, we've had students who have enjoyed school breakfast, and their parents haven't known about that until they receive, you know, a monthly bill that was like pretty significant. And, you know, I have had several conversations with parents during my career of, why am I getting, you know, this bill? My child doesn't eat breakfast. And it's like, well, actually, they have been going to breakfast every day.
Second breakfast.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That happened to us, so.
Yeah, so it's nice that it's, you know, completely inclusive at this point.
Wonderful, yeah. I mean, it really truly is. That is really great.
Would it be helpful if we put out, if we were able to put out, like, every week, like, don't forget to put in your lunch order?
That information is actually in our school newsletters. In our, I, I believe so. I know that I've, I've read it. You know, a number of times, and they have links for that, but.
I scroll through them, and I, I, I think I bypass them. Like naturally, just, just.
Right, right. Well, it's like, you know, when you see something on the wall when it's first there. You notice it, but then it kind of blends into the background over time. But yeah, our numbers are really great, so I, I'm really excited for especially our department managers to share that sort of information with you as a board in the upcoming workshops, because I think you don't necessarily hear about some of our departments, right? You hear about what's happening at the school, you know, academically, but there are lots of other departments that really contribute to the success of our organization, and, and they don't often get to toot their horns, and, you know, I, I kind of operate as liaison for, for several of those departments, and so I'm excited for them to, you know, to be able to share with you the great work that they're doing.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's it's really incredible. In fact, the, the offerings, you know, there's been some really fun offerings, I've noticed. I mean, we go through the whole month, all four ki- kids, you know, get through the whole month.
Right.
Because I can't remember every week, and, you know, some of the stuff, I was like, wow, this is a little exciting. Yeah.
They do an excellent job.
Yeah, they really do. All right, well, so, strategy for communicating with the wider community. So, we've been talking about this for a couple of months. I, I really would like to start publishing some things in the leader. Maybe budget time would be a good time to maybe put some highlights in, in a column. We lost Diane.
But it doesn't look like we stopped recording.
That's good. Oh, you defaulted to host.
Oh, interesting, okay. Well, I have the option to pause or stop it, and I'm just gonna leave it alone, and the cloud still says it's recording, so I think we're good.
Yeah. Okay. Want to make sure she wants to get back in. She can. All right, well, I, again, I, I, you know, I really do want to get a column going. I don't, you know, it's a lot of finessing, I think. But budget time might be a good time to do that. Teachers' Week, you know, or, you know, Staff Appreciation Week. Even getting out there and saying Staff Appreciation Week, this, 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 and this. I, I would love to really find a way to collect some information, like another Google form. Submit, so people can submit their own highlights, stuff that they'd like to have published, and we can kind of just pick, you know, maybe pick a couple of things from each area, you know, something from sports, something from academics, something from clubs, something from, you know, you know, the, the elementary school, I mean, you know.
Yeah, or like an event that happened in, like, at this concert, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 stuff like that. I mean, I think, I do really think that it's a, the, the community really doesn't not, they're not aware of all the things that are, great things that are happening that I don't know, their tax dollars are paying for, you know. Oh, it's, you know, the kids concert, not, you know, I think it's, I think that's a feel-good stuff and uh, you know, it's a good way to con- connect with the larger community.
Yeah, um.
I, you know, we'd have to create a forum and we'd have to, you know, get it announced and um.
Yeah, isn't there um, like a, a run that's happening in April?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's um, so every April, we, there, uh, the PTA does a um, um, yes, it's a race, it's a five K.
Whatever the race is. Um, maybe we can.
I, I know what it is. I don't know why I can't.
I'm blanking on it right now too. I'll look it up right.
I've done it. And I've worked at it. Welcome back.
Race to the point?
Sorry.
Yes, race to the point, yeah. Thank you Diane, welcome back.
Sorry about that. I have a, a loose um, charger connection with my laptop.
Oh.
It doesn't connect super tight. And so sometimes when I, like, because I've been sitting here with my charger plugged in this entire time. But if it, you know, it's, it's loose. And so um, I might think it's charging and it's not. So I'm back now. It's exciting for us.
Uh, so we're, we're just talking about, once again, doing some things with the, it's getting some information into the leader, um, you know, uh, by column and, you know, what that would look like. And I wondered if we could maybe do another Google form to put out in the newsletter, you know, I don't know, every month to try to get uh, you know, departments to write in, maybe something that they're doing. And then, you know, the student reports, we can pull some of that stuff in. Just to highlight what is going on in our schools, you know, concerts and.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe.
Lots going on.
I would, I would think people would want to kind of brag a little bit about the wonderful things going on in their classrooms and schools and so I don't think it would be too much of a burden to ask that.
Yeah, it just depends on like, I don't know what your limits are in, in terms of like word count or submissions.
It's pretty, it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of words, but, you know, I was saying to Jenna, you know, maybe we go through it every, you know, every month when we get the responses and just oh, you know, a couple of sports things and a couple of academics, maybe, you know, concerts and, you know. Um, I was, I love to hear about those things.
Yeah.
So.
Makes you feel so good. It makes you feel like it's part of the, you're part of the community, so.
Right. Yeah, and I think, you know, like, uh, my, I don't know. Some of our elders who are, you know, don't get to see all this stuff might really appreciate that. So um, you know, again, I, I'd like, get it maybe a launch date uh, for not budget time. Um, it shouldn't be too hard to get a Google form, like, what's your category, you know, like a category, um, and uh, what happened? Just like a couple of quick things, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, category, school, teacher, whatever, uh, you know.
Yeah, can it maybe be an extra link in our newsletters? Like, do you have something that you want us to highlight? Like, put it in here now?
Um, yeah, yeah, you know, I think it's, I think that the benefit, yeah, to the Google form is it all populates out into a one easy to read thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, in newsletters go weekly, but maybe we could just put it in once a month. I, just because I think there'd be so much. Um, all right, well, I hope there'd be so much. All right, so I'm gonna just keep this on the agenda. Uh, maybe we'll talk about it. I'll try to get a form created and, you know, maybe get that launched after we get through this period. Um, we could use that column though to talk about uh, the, the budget as well. I don't know if that's risky or not.
Well, I think it's public information anyway, so at least this way, um, anyone who wants to read about it, they can get a quick snapshot of it. They don't necessarily have to go
Yeah.
looking and re-watching the finance meetings and some, just kind of pull out bullet points. Um.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. And after, after this next, what is it? After the budget workshops, I can kind of, I'll, I can create a document and just kind of put a whole list of highlights from it. Um,
Mm-hmm.
Put it out there to, to publish anywhere and then um.
Yeah, that might be something we, maybe I could get John um, in one of, you know, we could have a joint meeting and uh, kind of coordinate with the town council about that, uh, since you know, I, we're going to be required, you know, working with them anyway on that. He just might have some ideas about how we'd like to communicate things.
Yeah, no, and, you know, and, and keep in mind that, you know, as the school department, we are one department under the town. And so, you know, it, it is definitely appropriate for you as school board members to advocate for the budget, right? Um, a- and I think that's always a place that people are unsure about, like, should we advocate for it? Should we just make people aware of it? But it's, it's, it's your department, right? And so your job is to advocate for the needs of the students.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we, you know, some really great wording. Uh, you know, direct but well-worded statements.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. I mean, I definitely would love to publish, you know, when we're talking about the budget, like, you know, we're asking for uh, this, look at this great thing that happened with our uh, school nutrition program and, you know, uh, now operating in, in the black.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think it's important to highlight that kind of thing, so, all right. Good, we'll, we'll, I'll coordinate with John. I'll maybe invite him to our next meeting, see what he might have to say. All right. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Then the next. Oh, yeah, re- re- routine formal request from board committees. I mean, this has been on the last couple of times. I, again, you know, I, we haven't heard from anybody. I, I think we're gonna have to uh, maybe, maybe on the tomorrow's slide, I'll say, you know, I want to remind other committee members to please update anything you'd like to communicate.
Um, I think since we update, since everybody kind of updates, um, does their report um, during those meetings? If we don't hear anything from those other committees, then we'll just kind of pull what, what's said during those meetings and, and highlight that too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think some, sometimes there's not, some of those are not super um, heavy on the info, oh, information.
Right.
Um, okay, well, if they want, I'm just, you know, reminder, you can ask us to communicate things. And then the tools. So we were talking about this already. Some of these tools, um, communication contacts, schedule. Communication top, oh, the communication timeline. Um, if you have anything to add to that. I wanted to update that.
I don't have anything to add right now, but honestly,
This one is.
I had a whole ton of time to think about it.
I know, I know, it's gonna go so fast.
Better at it.
I don't even know where February went, so. Uh, all right. I mean, so that's, that's nothing that needs to be really done today. It's just on the running agenda to try to um, get our tools a little streamlined. But this next month is gonna be super busy, so I guess, I mean, that's really, that's really all I have. If, if you have anything that you'd like to bring up next meeting, I'd be happy to add that. But it sounds like we're gonna just get through the budget. Um, all right, so I will talk to um, once again, the communication person at, at the town. Um, who was really wonderful before. What is her name?
Allison.
Allison, thank you. I was going to say Andrea and I knew that wasn't right, right?
Not the A, right?
Um, and just um, like a little blurb about the budget workshops, workshops coming up and uh, when they are, where they are and um, for that the public is welcome to join. I don't think it has to be too much. Um, and then again, those will go in the school newsletter too, so I think that's it. All right.
Great.
That's all I have. Any, anybody? I already asked that. Go on, one's going twice. All right. Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Oh, should I hit stop? It's on my screen to.